Ja, ons kinders. Wat vervoer in... ...in petrel die kinders wat nie school toegan nie? Oos ek vraar het gedag. Want das meestal kinders wat vervoer moet betaal wat nie school gaan nie. Want dat is die geraaal wat oor blijf ek koskoop of ek leren. Of er een paar schools kunnen op ons kinders nie. Recht dat waar? En dan het oos aspots via ook net in die boek onderkant van "Daai Bos". Als 'n blieft toch minister? Ek moet de Richter vraa. Als daar enige enes wat me kan antwoord gedag hier, van die welstinsa kan, dat shall ik het waardeer. Want ek het baeve vraa rondom die kinders. Als 'n blieft, bae danki.
Befo- before you come, ehm... Ehm, my apologies of... Can you finish your... Ehm... I did not want to disrupt the speaker. Because here, we are here to listen to you. So even if you say something that you feel like saying, we allow you. Because we are not here to control what you say. We are here to listen. So bear with me, ehm, eh, my chief, that let's allow people to speak. Eh, the minute we start controlling what they say, we are not listening to them. So feel free to say what you want to say to us. Thank you.
G'day. My name is Myrtle Richter. I've been serving my community for the past twenty-five years. Ehm, I would like to bring to your attention that our children in our community are struggling and suffering. Ehm, I have seen so much abuse in the area of children in various forms. And as someone who works with the welfare and taking care of these children and helping them, it is absolutely appalling the conditions that they are in, in some areas. There, eh, the children do not go to school. They sit around, there's like a sort of a bush across from the school. And they don't go to the school, but they sit in the bush and do all kinds of illicit drugs and activities. I would really like to plead with the minister, since everything is going up, our food prices, our petrol prices, and not our salaries, to please assist us with transport and fuel to get these children to go to school. Because some of them are required to pay for transport, but they don't even go to school. So we would like to plead for assistance in terms of this for the welfare of our children. Thank you very much.
Goed dag, parlementariede. Te mijn naam is Parlement Chief Lenbel Edward Kibberu van die Swelendam. Ehm, ik is van die Ogno Sarazi. As ek van die Ghaen- Oberbeeg Ghaenopwa tradisinele hees. Met één punt namens die koi san en die tradasneele leiers in die Oberbeeg streek, wil ek eerst 'n be swaar aanmaak. Als 's hier kijk en die bal, eh, ek nimm 'n zomaan, o twipen sienwe. Als 's praat van die woord zwartbemachtiging. Oos wil nie zien als die koi en die tradasneele leiers in die streek wil oos nie zien die woord ons zien neer en 't daar staan zwartbemachtiging. Maar wat is het oos wil zien? Die injimse, oos zoek die woord injimse nasi. Oos zoek daar wat zwartbemachtiging. Al moet dat onderstreep. Daar injimse nasi oos wil zien. Dat oos ook deel is van hier die, hier die proces. En dan zoek oos ook, as al die commissie aanstel. Dan moet daar in die, in die wetgeving ook saamgestel word. Dat is 'n commissie wat ieler samstel. En dan is oos onbelang. Is 's dan van die staatadviseers jet van mening dat al het samen die nationale hees en samen die tradasneele en koi san leiers. Das mooi op papier geachte, eh, parlementariede. Maar daar was nog nooit moet die koi en san en tradasneele leiers in hier die streek samgewerke. Das mooi op papier. Als ieler weerkom, wil oos word. Maar dan moet ieler die minister, volgende keer wil oos die minister hier, zal het geword die minister moet kom. Gwennemantasse, die minister moet kom. Want dat spraab die gemeenschap, die koi san gemeenschap van die Heeluk Oberbeeg en die minister wil vraa. Al en met laste punt is, oosbekommers is ook, oos was in 'n begadering in Ariston. Toen was daar, die ontevredenheid van die gemeenschap was daar oor die minister van mineralen en energie. Al is, al kom net goed toe pas daar. Maar al komie moet die gemeenschap samwerke. My hard en verlange is gedag, as ek die bergstap, werk met die injimse raad en die tradasneele raad streek van die Heeluk Oberbeeg sam. Zodat oos ook kan samwerke, samen ieler om 'n beter toekoms voor ons mensen. Bae danki, dames en heren. En daar wil ik se, dames en heren, ik denk die oos kan, die bal kan oos nie samstem nie. Maak iets recht van die injimse volk. Daarna, dan kan oos samstem. Bae danki, dames en heren.
Ja, goed dag.
G'day. My name is Glenwell Capito. Ehm, something I've noticed in this bill is that it mentions the, ehm, bill should be proactive towards, ehm, black, the black community and black people where they should, where previously disadvantaged people should be uplifted. This should not be an umbrella term. We would like to see that the bill specifically states indigenous people as well, mentioning specifically the koi san people. Ehm, and when a commission has been compiled, these leaders and tribes should also be included and represented in the commission. Ehm, there's a mention in the bill that, ehm, there will be work with the National House traditional leaders and koi leaders. It looks beautiful on paper to say that all of this will happen, but it is not practical and it needs to, a lot more needs to go into making it work practically. Ehm, then we see also where the minister doesn't actually come to us. He needs to come to our communities and with, work with our indigenous people. Places like Ariston, we can see that projects are being implemented, but no, no communication happens with the community. And for that reason, until these issues have been addressed, we cannot in good conscience support this bill. Thank you.
Ja, goed dag. Mijn naam is Pieter Heskwa. Ik is een koi leer van die Isokwa stam. Ook is ek die voorzitter van die Otsakaaka militaire federaan. My vraag is, so is volg. Mijn voorvaders het al die jaren uit daarie oosjeaan uitgelewe. Nog vandaag lewe ons fisser gemeenschappen wat deel uitmaak van ons koi nasi. Eerste nasi van Suid-Afrika. Ey daar, uit die siehe uit. En as hierie oosjeaan vernietig word of so is vernietig word, wat word van ons gemeenschappen? Wat word van daarie fissersmane? Wat kan al op die tafel sit van al die kinders? Ook ons as koi soldaten van Isakaaka het ons lewe gegeen en verjaare daar bo op die grens gesit en ons geliefde land verdedig. Bae van ons het die teruggekom hees toenie. Hees doodgeskiet. En dit voor een vaderland wat oos lief is voor. Maar nou wil oos weet, as ons al klaanie ons nasi nie geken wordie, ons militaire federaanie nie geken wordie, hoe zal ons geken word in hierie bal? Zo as daar 'n commissie angestel word, is my verzoek dat van ons traditionele leiers moet ook deel uitmaak van daarie, eh, eh, commissie. Al dan nie, en far oos nie daarie bal nie. Danki.
G'day, my name is Pieter Heskwa. I am from Isokwa Samkoi, ehm, tribe and I'm a traditional leader. So my ancestors are native to the area and now we are fishermen, different from how we used to live. My question is, what would happen if the ocean and its resources which we rely on are depleted? We have given our lives protecting the country at our border. Many of us have not returned home. And if we are the first nation and we are not being recognized as the first nation, how will we ever be recognized in the bill? My request and suggestion is that traditional leaders from the koi tribe should also form part of the commission. If not, we cannot support the bill.
G'day, everyone. En na gitla wia kasu Sutu. Libisalaka ki Janet fanaaka kistubi. Eh, ki dula hana mona kalidoni. So nagere, eh, tabila hulu halemona eh, huitli en tjetsohana liena le etemona tasina kaje. Ha hulu hulu hovanin, houtetzu wutrukutsebo, houtetse hushakamisebezhu, houtetze entezem befelalfati. Challen nagere, kitabila hulu halemona, entwenetena etemona tasiniana lakajenu, ikliemona, iktozibisaschabaka kapiliena, oh, kantwenelikliengayon. Challen nagere, kisapota, hulu entwenelikliengayon, ney bileninkay pamisa. So lubilia hulu halemona, litlihoona, lutrozibisakan tuetena. If entwenana, hagre mshomun, lipetrolieno libatang, oh, elieno libatang, ifumane ile kalidoni. Nanen karata, hulu haw, ikababa, tuaba, chakapaschaba, samone kalidoni, ibewana batwata benefit. Entwenenelita ifumana mona. Hubeteng, husapote lidibisnesitzenyani, oh, husapoh, hubeteng diskil sitsezwaan fortu baba chabatal ifumana, hutotoba ofele wutrukutsebo, ofele loshakamisebez. Segile wille, nagere support. Thank you.
Thank you ver- Thank you very much. I need this mic to go on. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. So we, we are a very dynamic committee. Eh, the last speaker was speaking in Sisutu and we will allow Honorable Volmarans to, ehm, interpret for us.
Sorry for that. Ehm, my name is Janet. I did not catch the surname. I'm happy that the parliamentarians are here. I'm happy that you are bringing us information because there's a lot of unemployment that we are experiencing around here. I support the bill on the basis of the information that has been given to us and that you are bringing unto us. I would like the youth to be involved as part and parcel of the bill so that there is a job creation amongst the young people and the other unemployed people. I am also supporting the bill because it will make sure that SMMEs or small businesses are taken care of and opportunities are there. On that basis, I am happy for the information and your presence here and I therefore support the bill. Thank you.
Ah, engos. Ah, man potiesem challe ngapambi kwakunye ne komi ti. De wuman dilake keetwa, ujo lo pahlumpangomo, eh, disuka ewadlevi ne grabo, diva desloof. Ey am indaba imgalile, disokasa lomteeto. Esesad, disokba di kasa lomteeto kwa infelapiya oya ikasa oguba, oh slula i provision yepetrolini am, kui provision yemineral. Unyanze lekilesbe naye, uminista, ozocho nga ngakasana, elkandelo le petrolini am. Number two, di kasa lomteeto, kooba apa inchona koloni. Siawewava maumum, oguba Eppofort West, ikona ikesekoyo. Di kasa lomteeto, kooba apa, eh, Western Cape sawewava maumum, oguba ikoni oile koyo apa eh, Cape Akalase. Kokoke, jenga mduumcha, ndibona ili tuba. Eh, logooba umkolowetu, we economic emancipation of now. Le alfumana i tuba, oguba, nyanekbenjano. Lomteeto lo kakulu uteta nga kasane, nooba uzozisa izakono. Apokobe kuchiso abando abachana, abando abatala. Abano mslabazokwazi, ufumana uloazi, kule industrie yepetrol. Den apokongoksoquazu, usebenza isa konozetu, so fulama tubemi sebenze, so kangela imi sebenze. So lomteeto loona, uzokocha ikati eziko. Ko te ketina genplazkalucha. To supporta lomteeto, kwezo zigaba, oba uzisa incluto. Engos.
Greetings, eh, Honorable Chair and the community at large. My name is Mandila Kekeetwa. Eh, I stand here chair to support this bill, Bill 13 of 2021. Eh, the reason is the fact that there are provisions that are provided on the background that this bill tries to separate the provisions of the petroleum and the provisions of the minerals. Therefore, we support the notion that there'll be a minister who will be responsible for the petroleum industry. And we had rumors that in Eppofort West, eh, there will be a gas that will be explored there. We are also grateful for that opportunity. And also in Cape Akalase, there are rumors that there'll be a gas that will be explored there. We are also grateful for that opportunity. Furthermore, this bill further provides that there will be economic emancipation amongst the youth because as the youth, we want job opportunities. Eh, we also support that, which will also alleviate poverty. In a nutshell, I fully support the bill.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Luando Maketa. Luando Maketa. Luando Maketa. Eh, from over back, eh, region. Oh, I stand here to support the bill only because of the background that has been provided, eh, of the bill. Eh, it's quite promising and impressive towards the ideal energy stable country of East South Africa. I will only look at the side of the working class to be precise, where it speaks about the transformation, the job creation and the investment growth. In that regard, and with that, with that being said, eh, we, we, we have been seeing the COVID and we've been affected by the COVID. I think we are moving our way after the aftermath of a COVID. Eh, so it is utmost important the separation of the, of the powers as it will also enable and expand the, the, the employment rate. However, eh, as the working class in particular, we have the, eh, we have the direct interest in this regard and we, we wish the youth can be also involved throughout the journey of the, of the bill proposal. With that, if that can happen and your presence here, we wish it can be more continuously, not only for today as a matter of compliance as it, in terms of the bill proposals and stuff. We wish to see you again with the progress report of what has been transpired about this bill. Thank you.
Ehm, my name is Keisha Leonard. Ik is van Buffalo Aspaai en Overberg. En, ehm, my, ehm, vraag is net, wat ik 'n bekommernis heet, volg is dat, is een ramp os mistop? Hello? Keisha Leonard. Ik is van Buffalo Aspaai. Ek is ook een fissersvrouw, kis afwankelijk van die oceaan af. En my bekommernis is net, is dat, is daar 'n ramp os gaan treffen zullen? Die olie en gas uit ons water uitgaal. Gaan die ma, dan moet die maatschappijen wat daar gewerkt moet van woordelijk gehoorak. Is daar enige nukkop gekommet in haar water? Al is am unvolg zien in die gemeenschappen waar het getrefit. En, ehm, voor mij as 'n jong mens en ik zien so, en is 's kijk in die, ehm, die permitte. Had je zien waar die buitenlandse mensen besit oost oceane, ze, ze permitte om in ons waterste drill. En oos beneficier is die mensen wat teen die oceaan. Blij is hier is die beneficierie van daar, die permitte nie. En dat is nogal 's een probleem als 'n Suid-Afrikaner, dat die buitenlandse mensen meer gerecht het in ons land. Is wat oos ja weet. En is 's kijk in ons, ehm, petrol and diesel. Oos in Suid-Afrika is betaal teen dieuste. Maar so skijk nou so bierlande, betaal al 'n goedkoper is wat oos betaal waar die goed, ehm, ol, eh, die diesel en petrol uit ons land uitkom. Dat is ook 'n groot probleem voor ons land.
G'day, my name is Keisha Leonard. I'm from the Overberg area. So I have a question. Or I would actually say, yeah, it's a question. If the, eh, ocean that we are dependent of, eh, the resources in the ocean that we make a living from, eh, is struck by a disaster due to any petroleum exploration, the, the companies who launched this exploration and drilling and activities should be responsible for all the costs and the implications that result from any disaster. They should be the ones to provide, eh, for the communities and take care of the communities in this case that this happens and that the people cannot generate an income from the ocean after a disaster. We can see that so many foreign companies own permits to our ocean. We as South Africans and people who live by the coast are not the beneficiaries of these activities. So this is, it's a problem that foreign companies have more rights than us as local South Africans. If we look at petrol and diesel, the exorbitant prices we are paying for fuel and yet our fuel, fuel manufactured in South Africa is sold to our neighboring countries and it is cheaper in our neighboring countries than in South Africa itself. How can that be right? It is a problem. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ehm, my name is Anita Kibberu and I have a few points. Ehm, the first point is how and why, how and who is responsible for the impact on offshore and onshore exploration and producing of petroleum? What regulations are you going to put in place? Before, we want to see this regulations before this bill can be accepted that people know that impact on their towns, on the offshore towns, on the towns, on the shore. Will, there will be regulations in place for the impact that this bill will have on them. And then I see that the prices, that the, a percentage of the price of national petroleum, well, we sold to the national petroleum at market-related prices, which I think is very unfair as this is our resources of our country and we deserve to have cheaper prices for petroleum bought from our resources. And then I commend the committee, I want to commend the miss committee, that there is no extra, extra cost in passing this bill or putting this regulation in place for, ehm, any extra cost for parliament. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, eh, good people. Let me reiterate what the chair has been saying all along. Ehm, you, you, the last speaker asked the question and the minute I start answering it, I am saying my views. And I'm from the ANC. On my far left, they are DA members, EFF, AIC and so forth. They will not take kind when I give you my response from the ANC. And therefore I will not answer your question. But the environmental impact that you are asking about is what you have in mind. You must tell us, how does it impact on you? Ours is to take it because the environmental impact in, eh, Overberg will not be the same of a person in Limpopo. Cause there's no sea there. You are speaking about fish and all of that. There's no fish there. But we are going to take everything that everyone is saying to consideration and say, the majority of people in South Africa are saying, this is what we must do. So we are not here to feed you. We are here to take what you are saying. And respectfully, allow us not to feed you what we think is right for you. Tell us what you think is right for you as South Africans. We'll go and process it. I may have a view of what is said here, but I will battle it out in the committee with honorable members who probably don't see the same way as I see. Eh, let's allow that process. So it's not out of disrespect that we are not going to answer your questions. It's just that the minute I answer your questions, I'm expressing a view that I shouldn't express without conversing other members who may not agree with that view. We want to thank you very much for attending this session. We will be doing this, ehm, all over the country. Eh, the good thing is that you were live, so we won't distort you. You were live on TV. We won't distort you. What you said is what you have said. If you come and dispute it, we'll show you a video that this is what you said. Eh, so that's the good thing about this process. Eh, we want to thank you, Honorable, eh, Condor for attending this, eh, session. Ich kann sehen, dass der Redner, der Vater des Klubs, verlassen ist. Wir wollen seinen Präsenz appreciate. Diese Computer, die sind nicht einfach geöffnet, weil die Menschen müde sind. Sie haben alles, was Sie gesagt haben, capturieren. So dass, wenn das Video nicht gut capturiert wurde, welche Chancen sehr klein sind, sie haben bereits etwas gesagt und es in ein Material übersetzen müssen, das wir produzieren müssen. Mit dem gesagt, wir haben die Endzeit der Session erreicht. Wir hoffen, dass Sie eine Schutzreise zurücknehmen. Ich bin sicher, dass es Erwachungen gibt. Ja, Sie werden auf Ihrer Reise in diesem Zusammenhang untergebracht. Diese Meeting ist organisiert. Danke sehr.